Zone Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. And so nice to be here. Thanks for having me. So SB 1024 has been proposed with the best of intentions, but it's deeply flawed. As somebody working successfully on the ground to create more affordable units in one of Connecticut's most affluent communities, I'm here to tell you that SB 1024, as currently drafted, will have an immediate adverse impact on the creation of affordable housing in many high opportunity zones in our state. This must be the exact opposite of what you hope to accomplish as legislators. You should either oppose its adoption or amend it as detailed in my written testimony. As you consider the bill, please keep in mind that Connecticut is a very small state with widely disparate real estate markets ranging from Waterbury, where a current two-bedroom condo is listed for $49,000, to Westport, where a new two-bedroom condo adjacent to our downtown is listed for $4.5 million. Really, land prices in Greenwich, Connecticut can be a thousand times more expensive than those in a place like Columbia, Connecticut. With pricing this dramatically different across the state, it's simply not credible to suggest that a statewide zoning reform mandating as-of-right development will have the same impact in different communities. It's a little like comparing equality with equity. There's a terrific pictorial that shows two people trying to view a baseball game over a big fence. One of them is tall and can almost see, the other is short. Prescribing the same solution for both means giving them the exact same size box to stand on to view the game. This would enable the tall person to see, but would leave the shorter one still straining. Equity, however, requires giving the shorter person a different sized box so they can also see over the fence. The proposal in front of you today airs in mandating that every community in Connecticut serve up the same exact box, even though our housing markets are so different. In Westport, we're working to provide higher boxes where needed to promote equity. For example, we require all multifamily developments, even those with under four units to deed restrict a full 20% of their units as affordable. We do this because in Westport, it works economically, but in other towns like New Milford, this wouldn't work economically. Section six of this bill mandates that every town above a certain size must take exactly the same approach to housing. I'm a lot more to say, so hopefully you'll ask me a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Danielle, Ms. Dobin and Rep. Steinberg, and we so appreciate your patience. I do see that there are a number of questions, so I have a feeling you will have an opportunity to share more with us. I'll begin with Senator Wong to be followed by Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Representative Steinberg for his comments on the as-of-right issue and to thank Ms. Dobin for her work as the Chair of Westport's Planning and Zoning and also her initiation of the Affordable Housing Task Force. But I wish if we had more flexibility regarding this Zoom world that we live in, I would have hoped to be able to also include Westport's first-electman Jim Marpy, who is also waiting in the waiting room. And I don't know if the Chair would indulge in having him exchange as well sooner versus later. But that being said, Danielle, thank you for your great work. Can you talk a little bit about the impact it would have in Westport as it relates to the TOD proposal for not only the main Westport train station, but also Greens Farms and the surrounding communities of Southport that would be impacted by these overreaching terms that you're reading?
Thanks, Senator. So I'm not going to speak about Southport, because that's actually a part of Fairfield, but I'm happy to talk about the impact in Westport. And the impact in Westport is really similar, both around the Sagatuck train station and around our Main Street. What we've done in Westport is leverage our really expensive land prices to require as a price of doing business in Westport, 20% affordability with every single multifamily project. What that does is incentivize larger projects because applicants, who are of course looking to make money on their projects, are assembling land and building slightly larger projects to offset the cost of all of that affordability. What this bill does is give developers an opportunity to completely and totally bypass our 20% affordability. Instead, they can build four townhouses, luxury townhouses as-of-right. And remember that $4.5 million price tag attached to a new townhouse that's across the river from our downtown. What this will do is allow people to build small projects with four of those, up to 15 different projects, 15 different units. Let's say there'll be three or four of these projects per acre in all of these areas. No applicant is going to self-select into our inclusionary zoning when they can opt instead to build purely luxury units. And what it does is removes from our control the planning and zoning commission's control. And we are elected in Westport the opportunity to use a number of different tools in our toolkit to incentivize affordability. And instead of affordability, as-of-right market in a place like Westport, it just means out of as-of-right luxury. And I don't believe that that creates anybody's definition of middle housing. And of course, there's all sorts of environmental concerns and the like dealing with Sagatuck, which is located adjacent to our river, or Greens Farms, which is almost entirely surrounded by marshland. But you know, those almost come secondary in terms of what I'm talking to you about today, because I know that a lot of you care deeply about affordability. And I don't want you to adopt something to diversify housing that actually will have the opposite impact, which is why when you look at this bill, don't look at the intent. I believe the intent in people adopting this language and coming forward was only good. Good people have worked on drafting this. The problem is they're trying to make it work everywhere, and it just can't, given the fact that in Greenwich, half an acre can sell for $1.8 million. And in a place like Columbia, Connecticut, half of an acre can sell for $1,900. The same solution doesn't work everywhere.
Without a doubt, and I know we're constrained by the five minutes, and even within your presentation, I have learned a lot. Now, I wouldn't want to dismiss the environmental impact. Westport is a coastal town on the Long Island Sound. And Representative Steinberg has been a very strong advocate in regards to waste runoff and pesticides. Here's the impact. When you build out density and part of 1024 increases sewer and capacity beyond what, and I hope DPH will be able to testify in that concern, is there's a significant environmental watershed concern as well, isn't there?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm glad that you brought up the, you know, just the situation down in Sagatuck, because there's this idea that if something's close to a train station, it's close to. I'm just going to finish answering the question, if that's okay, like grocery stores and schools. But our Sagatuck train station is nowhere near our downtown. And if somebody is living there with no parking, they have no safe pedestrian access to get to any of the important amenities that they'll want to visit as a part of their daily life. And I hope you'll take that into consideration. All of the train stations around Connecticut are also really different.
Danielle, I would love to speak with you longer. Obviously, we're constrained by this because of the list, but also a process that I objected to. But nevertheless, I'll reserve asking additional questions after my colleagues are able to engage with you. Thank you very much for your work, and thank you, Representative Steinberg, as well.
Thank you, Senator Wong. Next on our list, we have Rep. Winkler to be followed by Rep. Barnoni.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your testimony. So the law of supply and demand still works in Greenwich, doesn't it? So that if there's more housing, wouldn't the housing if, wouldn't the housing value, if you will, decrease? And in essence, more middle housing be created?
So thank you so much for asking the question. So I'm here representing myself, but I'm from Westport, not Greenwich. But the same rules of economics definitely apply in both places. So I think that's such a terrific point, because I've heard a lot of the advocates for this bill talk about the fact that flooding markets with so much more supply will adversely impact pricing. The pricing of houses across the board will decrease, and then homes will be more affordable in more places in Connecticut. The problem is in locations like Greenwich, since you brought it up, New Canaan and Westport, where new townhouses and new condos are so expensive. There's a new project in New Canaan that's adjacent to their town town. It's beautiful, and the new units there are selling for $2.5 million. So let's assume the market is flooded and the prices are reduced by 30% because so much more supply has driven down the cost. Those units will still not be this missing middle housing. And that's where I think this idea that the same solution will work in every town is different. And why instead, in my amendment, I encourage this group to look at amending 1024 to remove entirely this mandated language in Section Six. And instead, ask towns in their 830J affordability plans, which are due a year from this summer, to incorporate any of these tools that may work in their towns, whether it's inclusionary zoning, whether it's cottage clusters in locations where there's no access to sewers, whether it's as-of-right multifamily, or whether it's creating housing development funds. There are so many different approaches to creating affordable housing, but a lot of it has to do with the basic economics and where housing prices are really, really expensive. I'm not making up that $4.5 million asking price for a two-bedroom condo by the Main Street in Westport, even if the cost of housing is reduced by 50%. It's still not the middle housing that we're looking to do, but it's not impossible to create middle housing. And the legislature, by adopting 830J, has given every town in Connecticut a roadmap to create their own path forward, to create a diversity of housing in their communities. I wouldn't take what we're trying to start accomplishing and limit the tools in the planner's toolkit by saying around TOD and around Main Streets, this type of housing is going to exist as-of-right, and applicants are going to self-select into that, and you can no longer incentivize anything else.
So you would take out the requirement in this bill for multifamily housing and replace it with 830J?
So 830G is, 830J is a provision of the state statute that requires every municipality in Connecticut to adopt an affordability plan every five years. And we have all just begun working on these plans. And what you can do today is transition Section Six from telling towns what to do specifically, even though I've now put you on notice that it's not going to lead anywhere you particularly want to go in terms of pricing and affordability. Instead, to utilize some of the strategies that we have all learned work in various different towns and choose what works in each town, because it's not only about the land price, it's about infrastructure. It's about access to public transportation, access to jobs, soils, coastal resources, all of that. So what my, what I submitted in my written testimony was a substitute amendment, substitute Section Six, which deletes all the mandatory language and instead empowers towns to pick what works for them in their town, given the specific conditions in that town, and then present that as part of these affordability plans with the entire idea of diversifying towns in a way that's thoughtful across Connecticut in each town, instead of picking what might work in, let's say, Woodbridge or Weston and imposing it in Columbia or New Canaan or New Milford.
I'm familiar with towns that ignore their own plan of conservation and development. What happens if a town chooses to ignore its own plan under 830J?
So first off, I'm a huge advocate. I wrote in my testimony that I'm a big advocate of one of the pieces of legislation that you looked at last year. I think it's 6107 that I advocate that you also adopt this year, which puts a little bit more teeth into the affordability plans. But what's really important is that we already have a mechanism in Connecticut to bypass local zoning laws if there's insufficient housing, and that's 830G. And I think that when, again, it goes down to economics. So when we talk about changing the laws in towns to allow as-of-right development of what's called gentle multifamily, that could happen right now. Sorry, pursuant to 830G. And if you look at a town, Weston's a great example, where there's never been an 830G application, the issue isn't the zoning and what's permitted, it's the economics of developing there. And that has a lot to do with land prices and what things can sell for and sewer access, and nothing to do with what the zoning is.
And I'm only sorry, I can't ask more questions, short ones to get you to talk more. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Winkler. That's one of the benefits of Zoom access and why we have so many people testifying is because Zoom allows more people to sign up. That's the benefit and the downside of it. So thank you, Representative Winkler. Rep. Barnoni to be followed by Rep. Gupiel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Representative Steinberg, too. I know you're between two meetings right now, equally as important, and public health. Just quickly, you touched upon what you would do to amend. If you'd like to elaborate on that, please do. And then my second one, in a matter of, for time's sake, I'll ask both questions. And what do you feel are the benefits of having local municipalities, towns and cities determine their own their own accessory apartment and dwelling regulations as opposed to setting them statewide standards?
So thank you so much for the question. So I suggested in my written testimony two specific amendments to this legislation. So one I've already talked about, which is deleting the mandatory language with regard to parking requirements and, you know, as-of-right multifamily around TOD and downtowns and substituting it instead with really good, strong planning. The other amendment that I specifically suggested was changing the new Section Five, which mandates that all communities in Connecticut adopt essentially the same ADU regulations to allow each Connecticut community instead to develop their own. So over 135 communities in Connecticut already permit accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units. Instead of asking everyone to conform with your, this committee's idea of what works, why not instead have towns amend or adopt new regulations that reflect what lots in that town look like? For example, in Westport, we have a draft regulation to amend our existing regulation that's been unanimously approved by our Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And there, we look at providing a coverage bonus of 350 square feet for ADUs on smaller lots, because we want to ensure that ADUs can be built on smaller lots. Now, if the minimum permissible ADU size is 1,000 square feet, we have a lot of really, really small lots in Westport around our train station, around our downtown and in our beach area. That'll mean that the people who live in those community, in those lots, are not going to be able to construct ADUs. So it defeats the, if the purpose of the bill is to make sure that people can actually build these, then it's best left to individual towns. Also in Westport, we already have an accessory apartment regulation. Again, as long as there's some common sense, agreed upon baselines for regulations. One, they need to be freely rented to people regardless of whether or not somebody has a familial relationship with the tenant. And two, that, you know, they are always, they're not going to be deed restricted to be affordable or age restricted, because that really limits in whether people are encouraged to build them. Leaving aside those two big topics, I'm not sure why the state would want to micromanage the creation of ADUs. I think towns and town planners are in a much better position to draft effective regulations that'll work for their town. And if anyone's interested, I'd be delighted to share Westport's proposed regulation, which I think is, you know, really shows sort of best practices. But ours was developed by looking at some of our neighbors. This is already on the books in a lot of towns. Give people the option to adopt, and if they don't, then there's the default state legislation. But don't impose it on everybody unnecessarily.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Barnoni. Representative Gupiel, followed by Representative Dubitsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for your testimony. I do want to point out specifically, in my district, in my region, we really struggle with getting planners, hiring planners. There is a shortage of availability of planners, both, you know, within the municipal budget to afford them. And then also, again, as I pointed out, just finding them. So it's not quite the same scenario across the state in terms of being able to plan accordingly for them. And I think that's potentially why some of this legislation is coming forward, because ultimately, we want a lot of the towns to be able to create the affordability that's necessary to support the communities, you know, at large. I did want to ask a little bit, in Westport, do you have, or, excuse me, Westport is my district. Westport, do you specifically have any deed restrictions right now in place?
Yes, so our current, so the accessory apartment regulations that we have in place do have deed restrictions. So the new regulation that has been, was unanimously approved in our Affordable Housing Subcommittee eliminates those in their entirety. So it creates a pathway to have either an accessory apartment or a detached accessory dwelling unit based on works best, what works best on that lot and for the person who's constructing it, to create something that's freely rentable to anybody as long as the rental is for at least six months. Because in a place like Westport, we have a huge issue in terms of short-term rentals driving up rental prices. So I actually think, Representative, that the idea of utilizing this bill to create some basic planning isn't terrible. It should just be opt-in, and that's really easy to do. So for example, if you don't have somebody who's in place to draft a specific regulation with regard to accessory apartments and ADUs, then they can opt into the language in the bill. But it's different to provide different towns with different capabilities, the option to opt in versus to create their own that looks really different. The other thing that I would say is, there's some really positive parts of this bill that I'd love to, I don't want to take up all your time, a few other questions to talk about, but I think by way of example, the idea of a model code is terrific. You know, I was just at our Board of Finance meeting to talk about whether or not we need money to redraft our code, because it's really expensive. And if in Westport, we think it's really expensive, of course, it's going to be really expensive in some of the smaller towns around the state that lack the same resources. So the idea of creating a model code that then again, towns can opt into is terrific. And I actually used this bill as an example in front of our Board of Finance to talk about the fact that we probably didn't need to allocate money to revise our code, because I was really hopeful that there was this thoughtful approach on the state level to sort of do the work for small towns so that we wouldn't have that expense. Again, the key is that towns can choose to opt in based on their needs instead of this one-size-fits-all approach, which really doesn't work to bring us closer to affordability all over Connecticut.
Thank you very much. And just to follow up, you know, ultimately, when you talk about the one-size-fits-all models, you know, I'm a huge fan of transit planning and form-based codes. But then I go back to the fact that a lot of municipalities really can't invest in the planning staff that they need. I'm just curious, from your municipality, do you know how much of a planning department currently exists and the salaries that go along with the staff that are allocated to that role?
I'm not going to talk specifically about people's salaries, because I think that's a little bit of invasion of privacy considering the huge number of people that are watching this. But what I'll tell you is that even in Westport, we can't afford to have the number of planners that we necessarily need. Because when it comes to planning, it's not as though the Board of Finance is really interested in allocating lots of money to the planning and zoning department instead of the school's budget, parks and recreation, et cetera. So it's constantly a struggle. And we found a lot of support, but it's always a struggle. So I think what's important is being able to attract, lay people that are ready to be training to get involved and serve. And part of the bill that I was a little concerned about was the level of training required for volunteers. I'm an unpaid volunteer. I don't do this as somebody who's paid by the town of Westport. And my husband will be happy to complain about endlessly, since I take a lot of time on days like today to be here like this. And I think it's really important. We want to be able to attract younger, dynamic members of our communities to serve on planning and zoning commissions. We really want to enable women with children like myself who work to also serve. So I think it's important when you're looking at the commissioner training to ensure that the training is remote and on-demand. Because I've had multiple occasions where I've been invited to training sessions. They're all day on a Saturday. Well, as a mom, that doesn't work for me. And I would hate to have this legislation suddenly declare that I can't serve my capacity as planning and zoning chair anymore. And I'm not allowed to vote because I missed a five-hour session that took place in, you know, two hours from my house on a day when I also had a sporting event or a play for one of my children. So I would just ask you to, you know, and I think you're all really capable of it, to read over those training requirements and make sure that they make, that they would make sense for you in your own lives. I think all of you can relate to working. I know you're paid, you're not paid that much to do all the work that you do on behalf of our state. And if you had a lot of training on top of it, it would be challenging. So please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Representative Gupiel, are you good?
I am well good. Thank you very much. And I'll just point out, I was a eight-year member of the Planning and Zoning Commission in my town. I had to show up to the meeting days after giving birth, so I know what goes on. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Gupiel. And it is amazing the volunteer effort that goes into so many of our communities, such as what you're doing, Ms. Dobin. Representative Dubitsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Dobin, for coming in. Couple of quick questions. First off, you keep referring to your testimony. I'm unable to find a testimony on the system.
I'm so glad you brought that up. I submitted my testimony and I received an email receipt. I have also been troubled that I can't find it. So I'm hopeful that maybe I can send it to Senator Wong and then he can distribute it to the rest of you so that you have it. I also noticed that the testimony from our first-electman Jim Marpy hasn't appeared yet.
Which bills did you submit testimony on?
1024.
1024, okay. Yeah, it's not on the system at the moment. But what is on the system is the testimony of the Westport Housing Authority, which appears to be completely in contradiction to everything you've just said.
So I'm so glad you asked about that, because after seeing that, I reached out to the Executive Director of the Westport Housing Authority, Carol Martin, who is fabulous and brilliant and my partner in trying to create all the things in Westport, including a brand-new, almost entirely affordable complex designed specifically for multi-generational families to live in in central Westport, so that we can, you know, affirmatively add children from different backgrounds to our school district by providing opportunities, better opportunities for their families to live in the central Westport. And what Carol noted after our conversation was that she had not noted the new Section Five and new Section Six proposed as part of 1024. And when she's here later today, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she's going to testify that she supports my suggested amendments. Because only some of the language in the draft posted online was underscored or underlined to show, like a red line, people skipped over Sections Five and Sections Six. That just says new, but it's not underlined. So she, when, you know, flipping through, didn't recognize that they were entirely new sections. So I think that you can ask her about that, and she'll have her answer for it.
Great. Well, I appreciate that. Now, Westport and my town, Chaplain, are very different. I would be willing to bet there are properties in your town that likely get close to our town's entire grand list. And, but we do have, we do have some things in common. For example, in Chaplain, we, last year, we did our zoning regulations to allow accessory apartments. And unlike most towns, we also allowed detached, separate dwellings on a, on a single lot. So we have some things in common. We have some things that are different, which leads me to the question about the model regulations. This model code, one, the way that this legislature works is they adopt something to be drafted, and everybody loves it, and then next year, it's mandatory. So I'm just wondering, you know, a town like yours and a town like mine probably wouldn't be happy, probably wouldn't prosper under a similar code. So, you know, what is your view on the, on the ability of individual towns to make their own decisions?
Well, I think it's critical that any model code is opt-in versus, and opt-in with regard to each specific section and not mandatory for just what you're talking about. I don't know a lot about your town representative, but I'm guessing it's really different. So for example, when we were drafting our regulations permitting accessory dwelling units, something that was really concerning to me, some of our smaller lots are actually our most expensive lots, despite what you might think, because of their location. And if we were to limit 1,200 square foot footprint for an ADU, half a floor above, so let's say a 1,500 square foot ADU, which is what we're permitting on lots that are above an acre and a half, in certain neighborhoods in Westport, those would rent for $15,000 a month, not what we want to accomplish, and probably not something you're concerned about in your town. So instead, what we did with our ADU regulations is that we're permitting detached accessory dwelling units on the smaller lots. But they have to be a smaller footprint, because we know that size naturally will account for more. know that size naturally would account for more accessible pricing. If something is a small studio unit, suitable for a teacher, or a firefighter, or a younger person, it's just not going to be quite as expensive as a, you know, two or three-bedroom, two or three bathrooms. And for that reason, price, price of land and cost of development, the idea of, say, why code really troubles me. And I think that individual towns in Connecticut are really in the best position to create their own zoning rules. I'm really sensitive about our coastal resources, because we have a river and we're adjacent to the sound, in a way that might be different than somebody who has a town in, who lives in a town that's landlocked in the middle of Connecticut. Similarly, I'm really concerned about our property values, because we compete with Westchester for residents. Probably not something that you're concerned about in your town.
Well, we're certainly concerned about property values as well, and that's
Not Westchester.
Well, it's another issue, it's a different scale, but it's another issue that in this bill, towns will no longer be able to, to consider the preservation and stabilization of property values as one of the purposes of their zoning regulations, which I think is a big problem, whether you're spending, you know, a million dollars for an acre, or, you know, $10,000 for an acre. Let me ask you this, what is an average quarter-acre lot in your town, do you go for?
Um, I would say there's an average quarter-acre lot, because we have quarter-acre lots that are in very different neighborhoods. And we've had quarter-acre lots that can be sold for close to a million dollars, and we have quarter-acre lots that are worth a lot less, because it depends where in the town a lot is located.
Thank you.
Okay. Just one quick comment. For a million dollars in my town, you could easily get several hundred acres with a very nice house, barns, and all kinds of things.
That's why, as I said, multifamily doesn't have the same impact in your town as it does in Westport. The prices are really different across the board in Connecticut. And I think that as legislators, we want to create accessibility and a diverse type of housing, we need to take that into account.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Dubitsky, and Senator Martin for the second time.
Thank you, Madam, for the second time. I wanted to take kind of a macro basis, is, as the state senator runs in Westport and Fairfield, sometimes the imagery and the easy portrayal by the media is that we are the gold coast. But to share with the audience here is the fact that Westport has four significant housing initiatives in Hales Court, Sasko Creek, El Park, Hidden Brook, and the fact that it has one of the earliest homeless shelters in Homes With Hope, that started 1983, and Operation Hope in Fairfield in 86. The, 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 the culture and the personality of Westport is one of understanding accessibility, even though the cost has skyrocketed. There is a social consciousness, and I want to be on the record and get your thoughts as the Planning and Zoning Chair and being active in the community, that those values are reflected in the town government as well.
Well, I appreciate your quick question. You know, I chose to get involved, because I have seen that in Westport are these existing affordable housing complexes, et cetera. But I actually thought that we should be doing a lot more to diversify our housing across the board. And I'm really proud that, since I've joined the commission, that we've really done that. So, you know, I think that we were proven about a dozen mixed-income multifamily in the testimony, which hopefully will eventually post. You can see some pictures of them. They range anywhere from 100 units to 26 units to four units, and everywhere in between, and all of them are deed restricted to be a minimum of 20% affordable. You know, I've been working with our First Selectment Office and the Westport Housing Authority to create a new community that's designed specifically for families in central Westport that I talked about. So I'm somebody that truly believes that changing the zoning rules as a policymaker can impact not just the diversification of housing types in a town, but also the diversity of the racial demographics in a town. But I don't know that that's true everywhere in Connecticut. I do know that that's true in a place like Westport. And as a policymaker, I've tried to be involved in a positive way to advocate for changes, and I think I'm succeeding in doing so, because I have a lot of people in town who feel the same way, trying to accomplish the same thing. But at the same time, it's, it's always challenging when property values are so much. And the idea of having the state with this Section Six of the bill mandate the type of housing we should have around our train stations and our downtown, and take away our ability to approve projects like Beldin Place with 17 units, that's 20% affordable, or the Sawgatuck Center with, I think, 26 units that are 20% affordable, or the Ketchum Townhouses we just approved, 17 units, 20% affordable, the Riverside Project that we just approved. And we also changed our regulations, because we want more three bedrooms, to encourage more three bedrooms, because we're trying to attract a diversity of families to our town, to have instead the state come and say, guess what, those three bedrooms, none of them are going to be affordable anymore, they're going to be as-of-right luxury, that would really set us back. And I think there's a better way forward, and I think that you can do better than this bill, and I hope that you'll choose to.
Absolutely, Danielle. I wanted to, and I thank you for that, because in working with you, could you just share the town's leadership in thinking out of the box, in crafting solutions, the project that we worked on in regards to looking at the CT DOT, Department of Transportation, land, and being innovative in kind of crafting proposals?
Sure. So that, you know, Senator, that really comes from the planning part of planning and zoning. And we're really fortunate
Can you explain the project?
Sure. Well, we have a group called Team Westport, which is our group that exists to help promote a diversity of people feeling comfortable in Westport, and living in Westport, and being attracted to living in Westport. We have our First Selectmen's Office, and I'm really fortunate that when I founded our first Affordable Housing Subcommittee for the PNC, the First Selectman, Jim Marby, the Third Selectwoman, Melissa Kane, and the Head of Team Westport, Harold Bailey, as well as the Executive Director of the Westport Housing Authority, were regular attendees at the meeting. So instead of this just being me shouting into the void about affordability, all of the important players were in the room there with me. And what we did was talk together about what we wanted to see in Westport. And we knew that if we wanted to see actual desegregation of our schools in a meaningful way, we needed to create more opportunities for families with children to live in Westport. And all of this multifamily that had been approved up and down the Post Road, that had one bedrooms and studios and two bedrooms sprinkled in, we knew the bus was not stopping at those buildings, and we needed to do more. And so we worked collaboratively to reach out to the State Department of Transportation in connection with some land that they own in Westport.
Five minutes are up.
I'll just finish the statement, asking if they could rethink how they utilize that land. Because that land, unlike our downtown or our train station, is located in walking distance to the bus, and walking distance to schools, and walking distance to several grocery stores. And we knew it would be really well-suited for development into an affordable community. And working together with all of these different stakeholders, including the incredible neighbors across the street who call themselves the Yimby Group, yes, in my backyard, we've actually been able to persuade the state to work with us. So I
Absolutely, Danielle. And I really wanted to be able to tell that story, because these are the initiatives based upon local leadership. And just as Representative Gupiel said, in her experience in planning and zoning, you are trying to create solutions. And this is an opportunity where collaboration with state government, with the neighborhood, has created solutions that is the win-win for the community. And I hope we learn from that model and use the talents of the people that are on the ground in our localities, rather than having the one-size-fits-all, that really is, unfortunately, the easy solution, not the right one. So unfortunately, I'm very frustrated by the fact that we're not able to engage and talk more about some of the incredible experiences and insight that you could educate us on. I know it, but I just wish we were able to share that with a broader audience and with my colleagues on this. But nonetheless, we're constrained, and I appreciate the time that you've given already. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. I think we all share that frustration of trying to balance between the 300-plus people who would like to be heard and Ms. Dovin's incredible insights. And I appreciate that as well. I do want to note that many people submitted testimony on Sunday, and our clerks are working diligently to get all of that uploaded. I actually believe, Ms. Dovin, that your testimony has been updated, and we will hear later today, we hope to hear from First Selectman Marby. We go back and forth between public officials and members of the public. Representative Fiorello.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I won't keep you too much longer, Danielle, but very nice to see you. Thank you so much for coming to speak. And I feel like you are like a doppelganger for Greenwich's PNC, Margarita Albin. You both take that really thoughtful approach and full of heart. And I wanted to ask you, thank you so much for your comment about the training. That was a really great point to make it really make sense for the folks who are parents and moms. And I wanted to ask you, could you comment about the role of public hearings? Because that is, in the definition of as-of-right, online, one of these lines here, it does say to reduce public hearings. And I wanted to understand from you what value you give public hearings.
Sure. Thanks so much, Representative. So the first thing I want to say about public hearings, or what I'll call in Westport the special permit process, is that the special permit process doesn't mean that projects or multifamily is stopped. I think that we have 16% of the population of the state in Westcog or Fairfield County, and Westcog has created something like 40% of all of the new multifamily in the last decade. And almost everywhere in Fairfield County, special permits are required for multifamily. And as I said, in Westport, we've approved about a dozen different mixed-income multifamily developments. Every single one of them required a public hearing via the special permit process. So to conflate as-of-right with passage and special permit with problems is, is really misrepresentative of the truth, and you can look at the data and draw your own conclusions. So I think the value of the special permit process is just what you're seeing here today, where I'm able to interact with all of you, you can hear my perspective, I can learn from you, you can learn from me, and we move forward, hopefully, with a better, more collaborative understanding. That's what special, that's how special permits work. We often, in Westport, almost all of our zones along our very long Post Road are split zones between the commercial zone and the residential zone. So people's homes back up directly to almost all commercial uses in Westport, and they care a lot about what happens on those lots. Does that mean they get a veto? Of course not. But it does mean that somebody can come in and say, I'm really concerned about headlights, I'm concerned about noise, I'm concerned about how you allocated the second floor in this project. And then applicants have the opportunity to change their plans to be responsive to the neighbors. And they always do. They almost always do. And instead of being a negative experience for applicants and for neighbors or consultants, it's really a positive experience, where oftentimes we'll have people, as we did with the conversion of an old mill from the Civil War to new condos, come in initially with their own attorney, deeply concerned about what the development was going to look like. And by the end of the process, they had submitted written and in-person testimony approving of the redevelopment, because the special permit process worked exactly the way that it's supposed to. And yes, that project also is going to be 20% either on- or off-site affordable.
Yeah, thank you so much. And then just one more question is, you and I know Margarita have, you know, been listening to this early on and having conversations also with representatives from Desegregate and other groups, other open alliance and other groups. And after these long months of conversations, you are coming down, it seems like, and saying that these should not be mandates. The Massachusetts bill that people are often pointing to, those were not mandates either, is that correct? It did require that the towns vote to adopt them or not, is that correct?
So I haven't studied the Massachusetts bill, and I don't know if Massachusetts, what the Mass, I know Massachusetts has some sort of an equivalent to 830G, but I don't know if it's exactly like ours. But I will say that I was really appreciative of the fact that people who were leading Desegregate CT reached out. I think the problem was, is a lot of what we're doing in Westport is, number one, a lot more aggressive than what people in other places want to do with our, with regard to our 20% inclusionary. But also, it won't work in a lot of places. Rep. Dubitsky was talking before about his town. If his town tried to require 20% affordable, nobody would ever be able to make it pencil to build a thing. And it just goes back to the point that the idea of kind of shackling all of us to the same set of rules doesn't make sense when you've already adopted this fabulous 830J affordability plan context, where we have the opportunities to work together, to make plans that make sense, and use all the tools and the toolkits, and learn from each other about what works. By way of example, I gave a roadshow presentation to the Greenwich Affordability Committee about inclusionary hosing, and now they're thinking about drafting their own legislation, the same thing in Ridgefield, because our peer towns are learning about what works from each other. And then we're going to include all of that in our own affordability plans under 830J. What I hope you'll do is empower us to use all the tools and the toolkit, and not limit us to something that might work in Town A, but is going to be just a disaster in terms of creating a lot of as-of-right, super-luxury condos and townhouses in Town B.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative, and thank you, Ms. Dovin, for your time with us today. We appreciate it and look forward to continuing the conversation for certain.
Thank you so much.
Next on our list, we have Mr. Lawrence Torreino. I believe Mr. Torreino is joining us by phone today. Mr. Clerk, is Mr. Torreino available with us by phone?
Yep, Mr. Torreino, I needed you. If you can just do stop.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Welcome, Mr. Torreino.
Can you?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay. I am Lawrence B. Torreino, 74-year-old veteran.